All right, all right. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the June 10th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, final roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Wagen has an excused absence.
Okay. Now is the time for invocation by Dahlia Taft, the representative from the Mirage Jewish Community Center of Orange County.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'll be brief. My name is Dahlia and I am from the Mirage Jewish Community Center. I'm honored to open your council meeting. The J, as we affectionately call it, operates in the spirit of community, as does the city of Newport Beach. As a matter of fact, more than half of our members, guests, kids, and staff aren't Jewish, and they know it's a place for families of all stripes to workout, go to the pool, generally just have a good time. And in that vein, I invite you all to come and visit the J yourself and see what we have on offer. There is a traditional Jewish value called hachnasat or chim, which means welcoming guests, but which also speaks to something deeper, to noticing those around us who may feel left out or overlooked and making a conscious effort to include them, not as a favor, but as a shared responsibility. So as we gather, I wish for all of us to carry that spirit of welcoming, of neighborliness, of community with us. We ask ourselves and challenge ourselves to elevate our efforts and with each action to be better neighbors, to make space and welcoming for all. The strength of a community isn't measured by how tightly it holds together, but by how widely it opens its arms. And now the shehechayano, the traditional Jewish prayer for expressing gratitude for a new or special occasion. Baruch ha'tadonai, Eloheinu melech haolam, shehechayano ve'kiyamanu ve'higayano lazman hazeh. Amen. And that means blessed are you, Adonai our God, sovereign of all, who has kept us alive, who has sustained us, and who has brought us to this season. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Broten, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in a pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now is one of my favorite times in the meeting. We're going to talk about the history of our great city of Newport Beach. So we're very honored to have Bruce Cook with us this evening. Bruce, I've got a brief introduction, but if you are unfamiliar, every council meeting during my years mayor, we're celebrating Newport Beach and we're talking about the history, the people, and the projects of our great city here in Newport Beach. And tonight, we're going to be into the 1950s, the Hollywood Riviera, and we're going to hear all about the Bay Club, the Balboa Bay Club in the 1950s. So it is my great pleasure to welcome Bruce Cook for tonight's history presentation of the Balboa Bay Club. Bruce is a distinguished Newport Beach resident whose multifaceted media career and deep ties to the Bay Club have made him a perfect voice for recounting its storied past. As a former society columnist for the Daily Pilot and editor to the Bay Window magazine, he has captured the vibrant pulse of Newport Beach's social life for decades. Bruce is also an Emmy nominated television writer and producer. Tonight, he's going to discuss the Balboa Bay Club's legacy among presidents, Hollywood stars, musical legends, and community leaders. Let's give a Newport Beach welcome to Mr. Bruce Cook. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Stapleton, and thank you. That was a beautiful blessing to start our program today. Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody here, for coming. Let me introduce who is gentleman that has come with me before I start. Mr. John Wortman, would you please stand? John is the chairman of the Board of Governors for Balboa Bay Club and has been so for almost two decades. He's a close friend, and he has come to support me. Hopefully, if I embarrass myself, he's here to save me.
He's also a good example. You ask somebody to do something, they got to show up and support. So thank you, Mr. Wortman, for being here.
A very good example, indeed. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. I hope you enjoy this little history of the Balboa Bay Club and of Newport Beach. The Bay Club began in 1948 as a land investment. It had a series of outside-of-California owners from Texas and from New York that came here post-war to make money. But in the mid-'50s, a gentleman named Jack Rather, who was a Hollywood legend in that time, he was a very famous movie producer. He was well-known as the creator of Lassie, and he was a close friend of Walt Disney. He actually was the builder of the hotels at Disneyland. And he became involved with the land rush here in Newport Beach and purchased the Balboa Bay Club. In 1956, the population of Newport Beach, which also, 1956 was the 50th anniversary of the city of Newport Beach, and the population, does anyone want to guess what the population of Newport Beach was in 1956?
Fifteen thousand.
How much? Out loud.
Fifteen thousand.
Very close. Sixteen thousand five hundred people lived here, and most of them were part-timers. What does that mean? It means it was a small town, a beach community. There was a very wealthy contingent of yachtsmen and women, and famous Californian names that were around, but it was very small. But what happened with the arrival of Jack Rather, came Hollywood. And with Hollywood came Washington, and it all started to bubble in the mid-'50s. And it grew, and it grew into the '60s, '70s, '80s, '90s, and at 2000, it was over. But for 50 years, beginning in that 1950s, the Balboa Bay Club was the center of Newport's social universe, and it was a magnet for fame. Why, you ask? Because this was a small town, and it was a 50-mile-away escape. Hollywood came to Newport Beach because movie stars were bigger than they ever were. It was the tail end of the golden era of film, and the biggest names in the world came here because it was a break. It was a chance to get away from everything. And probably, one of the most famous, of course, was John Wayne, and we're going to talk about him when we click this button, if I can do it right. By the way, before I do, you see Desi and Lucy on their yacht. That was at the Bay Club in this period. Tom Poston, who was a very famous character actor in Hollywood. Below, you see Andy Devine, who was a cast member in many of the John Wayne movies. Actually, John Wayne had a whole group of men and women that he worked with. It was almost like his class, and they were in every film, and they had big parts and small parts. And it was part of the tradition of the movie business in those days that you kept your people with you. It was not like it is today at all. And in the bottom center, Olivia De Havilland, the famous actress from Gone with the Wind, also visiting the Bay Club on a particular beautiful day, very well-dressed for the beach, in front of Newport Harbor. Before we get into this picture, let me talk a little bit about other influences of the day. Besides Jack Rather, at the same time, there was a guy named Milton Brenn. Of course, all of you know Donald Brenn, but Milton Brenn was the father of Don and Peter Brenn. And Milton Brenn was a big-time Hollywood agent. He represented many, many movie stars, and was also a producer and in the inner circle of what was the golden era of Hollywood. He was also a very smart guy, and he was an investor, and he was involved with the Irvine Company. And obviously, came here for the same reasons that everybody else did. It was beautiful. It was new. It was away from all of the craziness in town. And he created his own empire, but with him came so many of his clients, and also his wife. And his wife, of course, was the incredible actress who also starred in the famous movie with John Wayne, Stagecoach, Claire Trevor, Claire Trevor Brenn. And today, in her honor, Donald Brenn donated enormous amount of money to UCI to create the Claire Trevor School. So the tradition continues. I had the great honor and pleasure of getting to know Claire Trevor, not in Hollywood, but here in Newport Beach. And she was both charming and elegant, but she was mostly down-to-earth and a very loving and kind person. And her stepson, Donald, I want to tell you, adored his stepmother. And I had the chance to get to know him a bit just because of that relationship, which was also an honor, because he isn't very known to most people, including many of the city leaders that we deal with today. In any event, between the leadership of Milton Brenn and Jack Rather, and then the coming of John Wayne, who came, as I said, for the very same reasons, to get away, he also came because he had just gotten divorced. And it was a messy divorce and a costly divorce. Now, he had been in Newport before because he loved the ocean, he loved boating. We all know about him buying his World War II boat for pennies on the dollar, which still runs today in the harbor as a tourist boat, the Wild Goose. But he came here to get away from town and built a contemporary, sort of contemporary ranch house on the tip of Bay shores where he married Pilar, his new wife, and raised a new family, all of whom are very much involved with Newport Beach to this very day. John Wayne was an American hero. He wasn't just an actor. He wasn't just famous, but he was a true American hero to the run-of-the-mill public, and more so probably in Newport Beach and Orange County than he even was in Los Angeles. And people here adored him, and they still do today. His name has great meaning today. He was absolutely, totally involved with the Balboa Bay Club, mostly because it was next door to his residence, and he would walk down Bay Shore Drive, come through the gate, and he lived and played there. He was known to play chess with children and attend the parties and work with the staff in serving people holiday meals. This picture is not here, but let me go forward and let's see if we have it. Not yet. Go back. There he is, John Wayne and John Wayne playing with the kids. This was a regular thing. It was a normal thing. It was every day, and this kind of behavior is what made him endeared to the public. Let me go back. Bob Hope was also a regular, constant regular at the Bay Club, mostly at holiday time. Here you see him with the big band, and in the lower circle, you see Claire Trevor. Eartha Kitt, who would come and do a concert in the Bay Club ballroom.
Politically speaking, which also started to boil big time in the '50s and into the '60s, President Richard Nixon. For those of you that don't know much about the Nixon legacy at the Bay Club, before the big remodel and the purchase of the club by the Pick-up and Martin families, the beachfront had a series of cottages on it that were obviously razed and a hotel was built. But in the 1960s and into the early '70s, a section of those cottages were commandeered by President Nixon and his staff. When he came to California, he didn't always go to South County, to his home there. He would come to the Bay Club for meetings, and his comrades would meet him at the Bay Club in those rooms. And during the height of the tensions with China, a red phone was installed in one of those hotel cottage rooms that was direct to China and to Washington, D.C. And that red phone stayed there for a number of years. So major national business was conducted in a small beach cottage in Newport Beach that affected the entire world during that Nixon administration. On the far right, you see President Jerry Ford, and obviously, in the center, Ronald Reagan. Ronald and Nancy Reagan also brought the Hollywood contingency to the Bay Club, beginning in the '50s, before he was the governor, when he was president of the Screen Actors Guild. As governor of California, he was very active in meeting Orange County businessmen for all kinds of reasons. The Board of Governors of the Balboa Bay Club at that time was made up of the most prestigious, most successful, and to a certain degree, the most controversial businessmen in California, mostly of a very conservative Republican bent. And with their support, Ronald Reagan not only became governor, but would eventually become President of the United States. So this place was very important to him, and the Bay Club atmosphere was perfect for it because it was insular, it was protected, it was safe, and the membership, frankly, was just very much positive and involved, and there was no tension of whatsoever at that time. It was a different world, obviously. Other people that had a huge impact on entertainment, society, Newport, and the Balboa Bay Club included the comic Jerry, not Jerry, Joey Bishop. Joey Bishop also came at this particular time, in the late '50s, early '60s, and he came not because he wanted to, but because his wife Sylvia wanted him to. Joey Bishop was known in Los Angeles as a party guy. He loved women, he loved going out all night, and married for 40 years to the same woman, Sylvia. This was no good anymore. This is a bit of personal gossip, but I'm sharing it only because I got to know Joey Bishop very well, and he was a very candid guy, and he would share the story if he was standing here today. But Sylvia ended up coming down here one weekend, driving onto Lido Isle, and there was a for-sale sign on a bayfront house. She bought it. I believe they paid, it was either $50,000 or $60,000 for it, and they moved in and stayed for the rest of their lives. And Bishop became a governor of the Bay Club and also very much involved, like John Wayne, with everything, all the activities that, from young people to old people, parties year after year. And lastly, the Goldwater family, Barry Goldwater of Phoenix, Arizona, presidential candidate, senator, was also influential during this '50s period at the Bay Club. He had the penthouse apartment in the apartments for years, and he and his wife Peggy and their children grew up there and was very involved in all the social activities with a woman named Dorothy Yardley, who was the social doyen of the Balboa Bay Club for 50 years, who entertained the Hollywood stars and the local community. Let's see what other pictures I could share with you. This is, of course, Ron and Nancy Reagan with John Wayne and Pilar Wayne at a dinner party. Notice the formality of the table and the dress. More pictures of the Reagans. Roddy McDowell at the top picture. On the bottom, the TV host who is extremely well-known, well-liked, Mr. Art Linkletter and family, who was also around the Bay Club a great deal of the time. Telly Savalas, ladies and gentlemen. In the top right, Joey Bishop as a governor hosting a party for the yacht club. And again, on the bottom, you see Joey Bishop's center. He's surrounded by other governors of the club. It was a tradition at holiday time that all the governors would replace all the waiters and give them the night off, and they would serve the public and the membership. That tradition extends until this day. The other thing that I would like to just share with you is that a great deal of the celebrity involvement also brought in tremendous, positive, charitable support for community resources. And because of a lot of the stars that came during those years, many Newport charities blossomed. And as a result of that, today, Orange County and Newport Beach in particular is possibly the most charitable outreach community in Southern California. There are more than 1,400 organizations that are nonprofits that assist children, women, families, and underprivileged people of all sorts. And a lot of it started during this time. And one last little interesting piece of Hollywood gossip, another of the famous faces around the Bay Club during those years was Humphrey Bogart, who was an avid sailor. And he was married, of course, to the actress Lauren McCall. Lauren McCall, and they were very happily married, actually, had two kids, but Lauren McCall did not like Newport Beach. She came anyway because she was a good wife. She didn't like Newport Beach because there was too much partying and too much drinking. And guess what? That stands today. Too much partying and too much drinking, but all in good spirit. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
That's incredible, Bruce Cook. Thank you so much for what you did. Ladies and gentlemen, there's the Hollywood Riviera, and thank you, Mr. Cook, for what you did. And Mr. Wortman, what you continue to do, and I look forward to seeing you in the apron serving the service of your club.
I'll get invited.
Okay, I'll put on apron myself. It's very fitting, given the Hollywood and celebrities. We just came off TV Fest, the inaugural TV Fest. We had Kate Hudson and Adam Brody and Jason Segel and the entire Landman cast, so Newport continues to be a getaway for Hollywood to come down here. So congratulations. Well done, Bruce. Thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to move on to something that is a surprise. For those of you who don't know, our city clerk, Leilani Brown, has been here for almost 30 years, and I do have an official proclamation, so you're on the opposite side of this one this time. So I want to acknowledge the great hard work of our city clerk, Leilani Brown. She's dedicated her career working with the city of Newport Beach as far back as December 15th, 1997. You do not look old enough to do that. That was like, is that your birth date? I think that's what that is. As deputy city clerk and through the years of outstanding service and leadership, was appointed to the city clerk on November 22nd, 2008, and coincidentally, the year I got involved in my civic duties. So it's been fun to ride with you this whole time. You're going to be greatly missed. Leilani Brown holds the distinguished honor of being both the longest-tenured city clerk in the history of Newport Beach and the longest-serving department director, a testament to her professionalism, resilience, and unwavering dedication to her employees and to the public service. During her tenure, Leilani has collaborated with over 20 different mayors. You're going out with your favorite, I understand, and 40 different city council members. God bless you. Offering consistent leadership, institutional knowledge, and invaluable support across decades of civic change. She's continuously pursued innovation and modernization throughout her decades-long career by implementing a suite of advanced systems, including NetFile, General, everything. You've done it all. Strengthened her city clerk's department in 2017 by adding a full-time records specialist. She's demonstrated unwavering commitment to excellence in municipal governance and has voluntarily served as a repeated leader within the California Municipal Clerks Association as nominating committee chair for multiple years, and was elected to serve as the city clerk department's second vice president for the League of California Cities. Now, therefore, I, Joe Stapleton, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Leilani Brown for extraordinary service, steadfast leadership, and enduring legacy as a city clerk to the city of Newport Beach. Congratulations. And I got a plaque for you, too. So this is with much gratitude for over 27 years of outstanding dedication and service. So with that, we'll take a photo with you this time. Yes.
Take the pictures.
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Back to work, Leilani. Now is the time for council announcements, oral reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember Barto, do you have any announcements or reports?
Yes, I attended the Balboa Island Parade along with the rest of the council. It was so fun. I went on a field trip with the Ad-Hoc Refuse Committee to what most Newport residents never see, which is the other side of your trash. So it was very eye-opening and gave us some ways that we can, some food for thought on ways that we can do better as a city as well. Our water quality committee met, and it was pretty great because we had a couple of very interesting presentations, but the best thing was we broke into subcommittees, and I think we have some really good recommendations that the community will be able to bring forth, and then we can share with council coming in November, so that's exciting. And then I got to announce the movies in the park on Friday, so that was super fun.
What movie was it?
Moana Two.
Oh, I haven't seen that. It should have shown up. Councilmember Grant?
Thank you. I also, as with all of the council members, participated in the Balboa Island Parade. I want to thank the entire Balboa Island Improvement Association and everyone else on that committee. It is always in the event of the season. We are so honored to participate, and we are grateful to have the kind of community that supports a small-town parade, and it just was an epic day out on Balboa Island. So thank you to that whole crew. I was able to attend the first inaugural Newport Beach TV Fest. I think Mayor Stapleton also attended. I was able to go and help out on the night that Landman was in the house, and it was an epic number-two experience in our city. This TV Fest is in its first year. It's part of the Newport Beach Film Fest, which we've had for over 25 years in our city. I want to thank Gary Schwenk and Todd Quaterero for their vision for the city of Newport Beach over so many years. The expansion of the Film Fest to the Newport Beach TV Fest is really bringing more celebration and opportunity enterprise to our city, and we're very grateful for their longstanding commitment to our business community and to bringing a lot of glamour and a lot of excitement, as we just heard, back to our beautiful city. I did also attend with councilmember Barto the Refuse Ad-Hoc Committee tour to the Clean Murph, and I'll just explain what that is. We were able to go out to Anaheim and see a facility that takes trash, trash that's already been separated. So when you put bottles in one place and paper in another place and separate your trash, it then goes to a facility, and they separate again. And my suggestion at the end of the tour was that every single resident in every single city should just go and work one day in one of those facilities, and we would all be doing a lot better job at recycling because it's overwhelming to see, first of all, the amount of trash and the amount of work that goes into dealing with the amount of trash that just our little city might create. So it's an eye-opening experience. Maybe you can Google and see what goes on because it's astounding. I want to thank our Public Works Department for setting up that tour, and we're going to continue doing that because we do have mandates from the state on how much we have to recycle, not only as residents, but as businesses, and it's really important that we continue to achieve those milestones. Thank you.
Nice public service announcement. Thank you. Recycle. Councilmember Blom?
Nothing, Dan.
Okay. Councilmember Weber?
So I just have a few things. I got to attend Fire Ops 101, where I basically shadowed a firefighter for a day. There was several different simulations. It was so fun. My favorite part was climbing the ladder, and I would do it again tomorrow if I could. And then Saturday is Flag Day.
It's nice to see the continued investment in healthcare in Orange County. And then I attended the CDM 5K, the 44th Annual CDM 5K with the CDM Chamber of Commerce. So that was a home run, a terrific community event. And tis the season, graduation parties. So I'm sure, like many of you, I was running around to a lot of different graduation parties. So with that, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 17. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Beers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
How'd that feel? That was good. Big heels to feel. Well done. Okay, councilmember Barto, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 17?
I'd like to pull item 17 for discussion.
17, okay. Councilmember Grant?
I would like to pull item 10 for clarification.
Do you have the announcement on Speak Up Newport?
And I also have a, a announcement that I have a board membership for Speak Up Newport, which is receiving a grant on item 13.
But no conflict?
I don't think that's a conflict. It's just a now.
Okay, cool. Okay, councilmember Blom?
I have nothing.
Love the theme. Councilmember Weber?
I just have to announce that I am the treasurer for the Exchange Club of Newport Harbor that receives a grant for the Field of Honor.
Okay. Mayor Protem Kliman?
I have none.
Okay, I have none myself. Do we have a motion?
I moved the consent calendar, except for item 17, that councilmember Barto pulled, and item number 10, that councilmember Grant pulled. And shockingly, in honor of Leilani's last meeting, no changes to the minute.
Whoa.
Mr. Moser, are you feeling okay?
30 years, well done. Nice work, Jim. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, councilmember Weber, seconds. Now we'll go to public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 17. If it's item 10 or 17, we'll be bringing, so no public comments on those two items.
Good afternoon, evening, Adam Leverens. I'd like to speak on 3 and 4, but I don't think I'll have time, so I'm going to jump right to 14, 15, and 16, which are appointments and nominees for various boards, committees, and commissions. First off, I want to thank those individuals who have submitted applications and are willing to give their time to the city. I mean, you've all seen me here a lot. It's appreciated that there's so many people willing to help and analyze all this stuff. As you might imagine, I have a particular interest in the two vacancies that'll be appointed for the Harbor Commission spots. And looking through the applications submitted for those, I see that Mr. Marlowe and Mr. Stemler both have passed the bar exam. I think it would be helpful to have some legal expertise on the Harbor Commission so that maybe the ideas and plans that come out of there are better formulated. The third gentleman, Mr. Miller, indicates he's lived in the community for over 40 years, been a boater. He looks forward to balancing stakeholder interests, which, of course, I would appreciate. The incumbent, while having not lived in Newport Beach as long as the other three, still has decades here, and in his application, he stated, quote, "I believe that our city owns and operates the most beautiful harbor on the West Coast," close quote. He also says that he understands the value of our harbor. I'm kind of shocked that he says that. I would hope in the past 18 months that he's learned that the city does not own the harbor. These lands are granted in trust by the state. The feds gave them to the state. The state grants trusteeship to the city. They are not a city asset, and the fact that that realization hasn't sunk in yet, I find very concerning. And as you know, and the incumbent mentions his accomplishments, we've got two state commissions putting a heavy eye of scrutiny on the city's management of the harbor and the loss of revenue from the tidelines funds over at least the last decade. Everybody tells me, it's pointless for me to speak here, that the incumbent will get appointed. I understand those appointments are to occur at the next regular meeting. Please think about it. All the staff time that has been wasted, all the thousands of dollars on consulting fees just in the couple of years I've been involved, this should not happen. If we would work together and realize this is an asset for everybody, maybe we wouldn't have the soap opera we have going on now in the harbor. And then 23 seconds. Item 3, as a wise gentleman said here, at the rate, the city is building affordable housing. It'll be eternity before we meet mandates. This developer, it's cheaper for them to pay $30-plus thousand and not build the units. Something else needs to happen. And then on item 4, the spectator racing and whatnot, can't the state penal codes that exist just be used rather than creating new laws? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hard to follow that. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Dan Napier. I'm a fleet mechanic for the city of Newport Beach, and I'm also the president of the Newport Beach Employees League. I wanted to come up here, and item number 12 tonight is our new MOU, and I just wanted to touch base and say thank you, because we had a very productive bargaining team working with the city, with you. I come from a different city, and I'll say that we're very lucky to have a council and a staff that, that works with us as well as they do. It's, a couple meetings ago, I was all prepared to talk about what Public Works does, and ironically, you're sitting there saying, "Well, I was just in the tractor, and I just did this." And I'm like, okay, check that off the list. Don't need to talk to them about that. And then, you know, councilmember Grant and Barto, they were doing, at the refuse station. So it's, it's very heartwarming to me to work with a council that's so involved in everything that we're working on. So thank you very much. I just want to say Tara, Jason, Barbara, Sarah, and Luke, they were part of the negotiation team for the city, very professional to work with. They recognized what we were looking for. They showed, they showed us they understood what we were looking for is that, to be valued as employees. We have 106 members. We have 106 members, and one of them lives in Newport. And it's very challenging for us to do that. So there's some things in the MOU that recognize their sacrifices, recognizes what their needs are, and identifies that. So thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this.
Terrific. Thank you for what you guys do.
Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, I want to thank, this Bernie Savalstad, chairman of, president of Newport Beach Historical Society. I want to thank the mayor for highlighting the history of Newport Beach in all your meetings. That's exceptional, and I appreciate that. Item 13, I'd like to talk about grants. I'd like to request that you allocate more than $41,000 community grants. Policy states that you could allocate up to $75,000 for grants. I'd like to review all the applicants, if you would, and see if you don't feel that allocating more than $2,500 to Newport Beach Historical Society would be advantageous to the city. We're a 58-year-old organization, and the only historic 501(c)(3) dedicated to archiving and preserving the history of all of Newport Beach. So I would like you to consider, you have over a half-million-dollar budget, at least $5,000 for the Historical Society, and please wish that you would do that. We have received only $1,000 in the last couple of years. We had over $5,000 costs moving from the peninsula to the fund zone. And anything you could do, we would appreciate it. We're working every day for preserving the history of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back here. Any additional council comments? All right, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 4, ordinance 2025-9, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adding chapter 12.70, prohibition of attending street races and reckless driving exhibitions, to Title 12, vehicles and traffic of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. And that is my last ordinance title. The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like we had item number 10, which is pulled from the consent calendar. Councilmember Grant, this is for clarification. Do you need a report, or?
I don't need a report. I guess maybe it would be from the city attorney, but I just want to confirm, because I felt like there was confusion in the way I was interpreting the new ordinance that we're going to reform the Aviation Committee, and we're going to have up to a seven-member committee, two members of the city council, five members from the community at large. I understand it to be that those members at large would be an appointment by the mayor. I am curious why we aren't using a similar system that we have with other boards, committees, and commissions, where we have an application process, a selection committee that reviews the applications, makes a recommendation to the city council, and that's how we choose the other members of a committee.
It goes through the standard process. There's actually a state law that requires, you know, that we notify the public of the vacancies and that gives people an opportunity to apply for them. And that's all set forth in the process in Council Policy A2. And I apologize if there's some confusion on that point, but it will go through the standard process for, you know, accepting applications, interviewing people, making the appointment, then come back and have it confirmed by the whole city council.
Okay, so that satisfies my interest. I guess maybe I need to talk to you offline about why I thought it was inconsistent, and maybe, you know, or, you know, in the package.
Yeah, that'd be good. A lot of the ordinance, I mean, a lot of the residents are drafted the same way. It's just, so I'm not sure whether there's confusion, but we'll talk about that offline, I guess.
Okay, good. Thank you. As long as we, it's consistent, I'm satisfied. Okay.
Okay, so not a direct appointment by me, but it will be going through the direct process like we do for any other commission.
100%, absolutely not.
Fine by me. I like the process we have now. Okay, terrific. Any other comments on councilmembers up here? Okay, so we'll go to public comments on this item. Mr. Moser?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. I had the same thought, actually, as councilmember Grant, and I did not make that comment in writing, because there are a number of other committees, like the Water Quality Committee, where that same procedure has been followed. It does seem to me like it's not the best procedure, and it would be better if all of the members participated in reviewing the applications and choosing who the appointees should be. And I would also point out our city charter lays out a procedure for creating committees that you want to be advisory to the council, and none of these seem to quite follow the procedure that is set out in the city charter. Had you not pulled this, the comments I would have made are, first, I agree with the written comment you have from Mr. Mel Beal, that reorganizing the Aviation Committee is an important action, and it's important enough that it really should have more thought and more discussion about how it's set up. I agree also with the written comment from Sue DeVorec, that if the new idea of this is to concentrate on people with airport and aviation expertise, I do not understand why having a career in commercial real estate would single you out as somebody with that qualification. And it's a very technical point, but I have heard in the past that we could not remove the member from Newport Coast, just as we have a Newport Coast Advisory Committee that has not met in many, many years. My understanding is the annexation agreement promised that a resident of Newport Coast would always be on the Aviation Committee, and I don't know if the committee was aware of that, or how they were able to write that out. And more generally, I don't think the people in Newport Coast are particularly the ones most impacted by our airport, or I should say, the county's airport. But I do think it is really important to have at least some community voices on the Aviation Committee, providing their perspective, and I wouldn't count on people with aviation expertise to be the people impacted. So I think this really needs more thought, as Mr. Beal pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
If I could just respond as briefly.
Yeah.
Mr. Moser's made these comments before about the charter applying to committees. The charter does not apply to committees, only to boards and commissions, but I think it's an important point that, that you know that the charter isn't applicable to committees.
Next speaker. Yeah, please. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Thank you so much for the Ad Hoc Committee as well. I've been on many committees, and it's not always a pleasant process to go through in rebuilding something from scratch. Sorry about my voice. I had dental surgery today, so not going to be able to talk too loud. I did send a comment, which was posted. I'm not sure if you had time to read it. My concern wasn't so much the need for the restructure. I do believe it needed restructuring. It wasn't working very well, and the structuring process was a positive one, and Ad Hoc Committee was the right approach. I think that was a good way to put it together. My concern was the, again, as Jim was mentioning on my comment, the time for deliberation on the concept that was put forward, which I think may be an appropriate one, and may be the one that will be the permanent approach, likely will be, because my comment probably won't change anything. However, I do think because of the settlement agreement coming due, beginning conversations next year, the composition of this committee is critically important, and also the structure of how it will perform its mandate going forward for the city. I went back to one of the original amendments that Aaron was nice enough to provide, looking at the documentation for the original amendments done, and, and also some of the changes to the Aviation Committee. One of the things that was pointed out by Aaron was that the airport noise and issues related to the airport was the number-one concern issue of the city of Newport. That puts it pretty high when you think of the harbor and trash and various other things. But with that being so high, it is a critical issue that we should get right. And I, I only saw the notice Friday morning. It went out on Thursday of what the structure is. There was no time to have a meeting of my organization, so I'm speaking as a resident and not as an organization, but I would like to have more time and have some thought brought in from others. That was my view. And I don't see the problem with the law.
I do believe it needed restructuring. It wasn't working very well. And the structuring process was a positive one, and add-on committee was the right approach. I think that was a good way to put it together. My concern was the, again, as Jim was mentioning on my comment, the time for deliberation on the concept that was put forward, which I think may be an appropriate one, and may be the one that will be the permanent approach, likely will be, because my comment probably won't change anything. However, I do think because of the settlement agreement coming due, beginning conversations next year, the composition of this committee is critically important, and also the structure of how it will perform its mandate going forward for the city. I went back to one of the original amendments that Aaron was nice enough to provide, looking at the documentation for the original amendments done, and, and also some of the changes to the aviation committee. One of the things that was pointed out by Aaron was that the airport noise and issues related to the airport was the number-one concern issue of the city of Newport. That puts it pretty high when you think of the harbor and trash and various other things. But with that being so high, it is a critical issue that we should get right. And I, I only saw the notice Friday morning. It went out on Thursday of what the structure is. There was no time to have a meeting of my organization, so I'm speaking as a resident and not as an organization. But I would like to have more time and have some thought brought in from others. That was my view. And I don't see the problem with a loss of a couple of weeks and bringing it forward for a vote at a future date would be a large issue. And it may allow some changes to be put forward, such as having non-voting members from some organizations that have some impact, and possibly Newport Coast would be one with a non-voting membership. The other thing I'd point out historically, because probably the current council wasn't involved in some of the history, Aaron was, but there were periods when there was disagreements between the east side of the bay and the west side of the bay of was there bias on talking to the FAA about getting route changes done, when they did HERO and before that, PIGON. And I think one of the reasons they went forward with the district members was to make sure that everyone was given representation. It didn't work out so well organizationally, unfortunately. It got a little bulky with so many members. However, that was kind of the genesis, I believe, of why it was put together with representation from a district standpoint. We're losing that now. Will some of these arguments come back in the future? Hopefully not. But I just wanted to bring those points forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. And I'm happy to say we still have turf wars between Noah and myself on east and west sides. So those are still alive and well. Any other public comments additional on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back here. Any other public, or any comments on councilmembers? All right, go ahead. Yeah, Councilmember Grant.
Aaron, can you clarify about the Newport Coast annexation agreement? Is there an obligation to include someone?
So it does cover, the Newport, the pre-annexation agreement does have a provision that talks about having a member from Newport Coast on the committee. But we've had the committee for a very long time, and that, that position's been empty for an extended period of time. I mean, I think it's fine to give preference to somebody from Newport Coast if they want to be on, on the committee pursuant to that agreement. But it's also, you know, it sort of seems like it's an impossibility because nobody ever applies for it that's from Newport Coast.
So no, no legal obligation to include that in the ordinance?
So we could designate one of the positions for Newport Coast, but it'll remain empty, more than likely, because no one will apply for it.
I just want to make sure that we're following, you know, our mandatory requirements. It's up to you to ascertain what those are.
So I'll add a provision that says, one of the positions for somebody from Newport Coast. So if no one from Newport Coast applies, it'll go to somebody else. How about, does that sound fair? Okay, all right, thank you.
This is, this, this is, okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay. Okay, perfect. We'd love for you to, okay. Well, that's great. We got all these people from Newport Coast. You guys are all going to apply now. I look forward to seeing your applications. And if I get none, I'm going to come back to you guys. All right, thank you for that comment. We'll, we'll make sure we can get somebody to fulfill Newport Coast. We love having Newport Coast in our community. So any other comments on Councilmember Blum?
I just want to go ahead and make the motion to approve staff recommendation on this item.
Perfect. Do I have a second? Mayor Protim Kliman, second. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Okay, terrific. Item number 17 was pulled by councilmember Barto. Do you want a staff report, or?
Just a slight extended staff report. I feel like the rationale is here. Being new to the, new-ish to the council, I'm going to take new members' privilege and just ask for clarification for the benefit of the public, kind of how the process works and why we would consider this and all of those things.
Okay. Do you want to clarify this item? Maybe our city manager just give us a brief overview on what this is and what we're looking to accomplish?
Do you want me to jump in here?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, well, thank you so very much for that opportunity. As we're looking at Greater Newport Center as a whole, and the movement of pieces and projects, some of the issues that we've had over the years and kind of the completion of the Civic Center, we look at area response times based with our fire department, how we can give the best service throughout the city. And in all of that, we identified that we have some areas that aren't getting service as quickly as possible. So as we look to replace an aging fire station, an aging police station, which has been on previous agendas, we started looking for locations in which to do that. As we know, it's very difficult to build something while a building is still there. So oftentimes, we look at a temporary facility. In this particular piece, we are looking at the Transportation Center, which would be an ideal spot, in my own personal opinion, for a new fire station. So we're starting that process. The process is long. It requires a lot of moving pieces and a lot of work. And we're just trying to line everything up to make something like that work. And that is in regards to entitlement, letters that we have to send to current occupants of that area, dealing with our fire department to make sure that the coverage zones are within what we, or what we look for for our response times. And so it's one of many process to get us to the finish line on kind of finishing what we believe is an ideal location for the fire station. Was that helpful?
Yes, thank you, for the benefit of the public. This is just step one. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Grant?
So I have a question. I don't know, I mean, now that we're talking about response times, I wasn't really anticipating that, but, and I don't know that Councilmember Blum is necessarily prepared to answer this. Maybe it would be better coming from somebody from the fire staff that's prepared the report. But I was curious, because we talked about response times, for example, relating to certain of the communities served by that station, but not all of them. Do we have a full report for, for those response times? I'm just curious. I saw that, for example, we do have improved response times for the Port Streets and Benita Canyon, which is my community, so that's great. But I wonder about other communities that are served by that station. For example, maybe like East Bluff or Harbor Cove, or maybe even down to Bayside Village if that, if that community is served by that, by that station, so.
And we do see that annual report come out, highlighting the different response times and kind of the adjustments that we're making through those individual stations. I think part of the additional pieces you've asked for, do you have the ability to have the Santa Ana Station or the Santa Heights Station respond quickly to those? It was really the difficulty of getting deep into the Port Streets and some of the other ones that we found the biggest issue, which is why we were looking for a change in that station.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the fire department preparing, you know, those statistics for us. We have some of them, but not all of them. Maybe we need more time. I'm not exactly sure. But certainly, there's other communities that we represent that, that need to know what the response times would be different if we moved the stations. And I don't know that I've seen that. So I'd be interested in that, I guess, at a future juncture.
I think this is the very beginning stages of the process, but I agree, we're going to go through all of that and make sure, whatever we do in the community is going to benefit a large majority, for sure.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, I was contacted by several members of communities in my district that are served by those stations, and some were very pleased and others were not so pleased. So I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases. And I don't know that we addressed all the communities in the staff report. So more coming is great.
Yep, sounds like it.
Yeah, and I think this piece is more about a letter to the OCTA that we're drafting as an initial response. I, I think we can look to the fire department to bring forth something as far as response times at a later date, to bring every piece of this with all of our fire department responses.
Cool. Okay. Any other comments on councilmembers? Okay, we'll go to public comments on this item. Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Again, I agree with councilmember Grant that this probably would benefit from some more discussion. As a member of the public, councilmember Blum's first couple of sentences kind of threw me off, and I'm not sure now, are we actually talking about a potential location for a permanent new fire station or only a temporary fire station while the current one is being rebuilt? I didn't quite follow what you're trying to say there. If we are looking for a new permanent fire station location, as I indicated in writing, this does not seem to be the most central for the communities that are far away from fire stations currently. And actually, if you just look on a map and where our fire stations are located, the central point that is in the middle of the area not served is at the corner of MacArthur and Benita Canyon Drive, which I'm showing you. This is item number 18, page 7, staff report. City does own a property there. We used to have a statue of the late Ronald Reagan at that corner. Has that been considered as a possibility? And what would the response times be if that corner was turned into a fire station? It seems like an important question before we make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back here. Any additional comments? No? Yep, okay.
I'd like to make the motion to move ahead with staff recommendation.
Okay. Mayor Protim Kliman, seconds. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Okay. All right, now is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers on non-agenda items? If you're planning on speaking, why don't we go ahead and set one person at each mic, and we'll do a line down the center? So if you're planning to speak, please stand, and we'll do public comments. Floor is yours, yeah.
Hello, I have a presentation for my comment. It's for Courtney Ricard. Hi, my name is Courtney Ricard, and I'm a research assistant with Orange County Coast Keeper. We are a clean water nonprofit organization located in Costa Mesa. First, I want to thank the city of Newport Beach for provided the, providing the funding that helped launch the Santa Ana River Mouth Monitoring and Outreach Project in 2021. Next slide, please. So our work at the Rivermouth is centered around the community outreach that brings awareness to the protection of vulnerable seabird species, as well as including the ecological monitoring of their site. We advocate for responsible recreation, which includes respecting wildlife, cleaning up after ourselves and our pets, and keeping dogs on leash in their allowed timeframe. Next slide, please. So last year, in July 2024, an electronic mobile no-dog beach sign was set up by the city on Seashore Drive near the Santa Ana Rivermouth. And this sign remained until October 2024. It made it very clear to beach visitors what is expected of them when they enter this beach. And this timeframe also gives vulnerable seabird populations ample time to complete their nesting season. Next slide, please. How this sign helped, all of those dots that you can see on the graphs there represent dog presence. And as you can see, from the left side, we have 2023 off-leash dog presence over time. And on the right, bottom right, we have 2024's dog off-leash presence over July through October. And you can see the dog beach sign had a huge impact on the presence of off-leash dogs at the Rivermouth. And it was a major success in protecting the wildlife there. In 2023, before the sign was posted, our monitoring team documented high numbers of off-leash dogs in the area. The Y axis is hard to read, but it's increasing in increments of five, whereas on the right side, in 2024, you can see the off-leash dog presence significantly dropped. There are even some periods where the numbers recorded are zero off-leash dogs, and the Y axis increases in increments of two. So there are significantly less dogs last year versus 2023. This data shows the success of the no-dog beach sign, and we would like to see it set up again this year. Thank you again for supporting our work and helping us promote stewardship in such an important ecosystem.
Terrific. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Adam Leverens, again. I'm going to talk about, there's a harbor commission agenda tomorrow night. I believe it's item 6.3. It's related to increasing the waits for the shore moorings. It proposes, or there's a staff report from the harbor department that proposes discussion about who should pay for this, whether it be the city or the mooring permities. Reading through Title 17, the harbor code today, it indicates that permities shall pay for such things. Everyone I've spoken with think that's appropriate and feels that the co-mingling of ownership of mooring tackle would be problematic right now. As I think you know, mooring equipment is maintained and, and owned by the persons that have the mooring permits. The, the reason that this is stated as being needed is said that there has been drag of some moorings and storms. I know that's true for offshore moorings. I've made inquiry to the harbor department if any shore moorings have dragged. As of a couple hours ago, I haven't heard back yet, so I, I don't know on that. I've also made inquiry, this is supposedly going to directly affect 49 permities. I've asked if those to be impacted have been noticed of this on the agenda tomorrow night, and I also haven't heard back on that. I would urge council, mayor, to maybe reach out to the harbor commission and find out if these people have received notice and the conditions under which this is. And given the scrutiny, scrutiny, scrutiny that the harbor is under right now, maybe this needs more engagement from stakeholders. And again, I can't know because I haven't received responses, but it, it seems like, because all eyes are on us, looking at it next month rather than tomorrow night might be wise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Denise Oberman, mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much for bringing forward the notion of the criticality of response. There was some discussion as Agenda item number 10 has to response from the fire department. And I just want to emphasize something that the council has previously brought forward and ask that it continue to be top of mind. We have ongoing discussion. So as we intensify the development in this city and we intensify the number of transient visitors that come here, so are needs to manage risks and have good solutions for orchestrating a good, safe response time from the fire, from the PD, from the paramedics, from, from all of our protection, life safety organizations is going to continue to increase and become more complicated. So I know that over the weekend, Mayor Protim Kliman made the point that CDM had a great proactive and it sounds like rigorous enforcement effort with some good results. So kudos to the city for accomplishing that, the council and the staff. I would ask that that same rigor and the same thoughtfulness be applied to looking at what kinds of response times we need. We talk about top priority or high priority to be a safe community. And it, it is critical that we understand what it takes for, to, in terms of regulations, in terms of the resource planning and allocation, to be able to deliver on that promise. So that's my request, the council not, not lose sight of that and that that is a key metric that we look at for any key actions or key developments that the city and the council may choose to undertake on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you for having me. No, I'm not from Newport Beach, but this is a lovely city. However, the California Energy Commission is getting ready to vote on the, and actually issue an emergency permit for the installation of a battery plant in San Juan Capistrano. And I am here simply to ask that Newport Beach, at its voice in opposition to this, in, in addition to that of Katrina Foley's, if you can imagine that, and Mike Levent, Mike Levens. And also, San Clemente has also sent in a letter voicing opposition to the, to the installation of this plant, in addition to San Juan.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. So my name is Michael Giroux. I represent the Newport Coast Community Association. I'm on the board. And nice to meet everyone. Thank you for your service. I'm here with Zach. He's the head of the security for all the gates up there as well. So we have some homeowners tonight that wanted to express that... So we have some homeowners tonight that wanted to express that the police department is doing a phenomenal job, but they might need some additional resources to help them out with investigations and to deter the burglaries that are occurring in Newport Coast. I really believe right now that we're under attack. There are burglaries every other day, a lot of police presence in the area, but we need some more resources at our disposal. I'm going to let Zach speak a little bit. I know that we have Flock and we're incorporating a lot of new technology, but I think that there's room for additional technology that we could incorporate. I'll let Zach speak in a minute, but I moved here about 17 years ago, and we used to be able, not that we did, but we used to be able to leave our doors open. And we didn't fear going to dinner, and we did not fear having our houses broken into. And as probably all of you are well aware, in the last couple of years, we have been under attack. And personally, my family and I, we don't feel safe leaving for dinner. We were broken into about two weeks ago, and my house was heavily guarded. They use Wi-Fi jammers, and they're just very vigilant on their technology, and we have to combat that. I would like to suggest that if it's a funding issue, we could take care of that as well. There are a lot of people that I know personally that would love to donate. It would be their pleasure to beef up technology and resources in the community. I would like to reestablish that Newport is the place where criminals do not come. They're afraid to come here and commit crime. And I want to make Newport Coast and Newport Beach City, once again, very safe and restore that peace that we had. So you'll be hearing from a couple of homeowners. Again, police department is doing a phenomenal job. We're very, actually, very close to catching and making an arrest in a week from now. So I feel like if they had a few more tools, that they would be cutting edge, and it would actually reduce the crime rates and therefore raising property values and increasing safety in the community and peace of mind. I'll let Zach speak on his own timing then.
Thank you. I'll just say before you speak, the police chief is in the back. We've had these same discussions in Crystal Cove. I just want to make the record clear, Newport Beach is still one of the safest places in the world. I'm sorry to hear about your home.
Thank you.
The opportunity crimes are alive and well, and unfortunately, the weaker crime in Los Angeles and the state of California, the worst that affects our quality of life down here. We've invested millions into these Flock cameras. We now have 70 cameras online here in the city of Newport Beach. We just invested $2.1 million into a drone, the only American-made drone manufacturer here in the United States. Those are going to be up and flying momentarily. We're doing pilot program testing right now. We're doing a lot we can do more, for sure. But I want you to know you have full confidence from our city council up here that we're doing all we can to make sure that we're protecting all of our residents in the city of Newport Beach. So if you want to give your card to the chief, I'm happy to set up a meeting or give it to our city attorney. I'm happy to coordinate a meeting with you guys offline at city hall here. We can bring our police chief, lieutenants in charge of the area, your security team, and we can have an offline conversation and get through this as quickly as possible. So we're here to support.
That means a lot. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to add real quick. So I know we've been chatting about the Flock cameras and possible installation of maybe a few more, that we may have found some areas that may have been kind of, not intentionally, but been overseen possibly. However, I was also wanting to let everybody know here that I've been reaching out to a technology company that is basically, they're really good with infrared technology that would literally cover within five football fields forward and five football fields and width, picking up the canyons. So we would be able to see if somebody's coming up within those canyons. I'm trying to figure out the infrastructure and how everything works, pricing, all that kind of stuff. We've been meeting with the owner of the technology, and I would like to get more information of that to you guys. So maybe that's something that we could, you know, address when we have that meeting.
Yeah.
But we've been in the last probably three weeks really kind of hunkering down and getting all that ready. So we should have that ready to go when we do meet. That's pretty much all I had.
Cool. Now the stronger we are as a community, the better to stop these opportunity crimes. Unfortunately, we cannot leave our doors unlocked like we did 20 years ago. There's just too many threats from the outside forces dictating that. So I would love to sit down with you guys. Sarah Weber, our council member from District Seven will be there as well.
Perfect.
And we'll have these conversations, and we'll continue to invest in infrastructure. But we have the best police department in this country, so I know they're doing all they can to protect you guys, so.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lily Daffterian. I'm also a resident of Newport Coast. I just want to piggyback on what Michael mentioned. I too was a victim of a burglary last Easter Sunday. I was actually home, and the guy broke my French door glass, came into my kitchen, and I had to scream the cops were coming. And again, we're very fortunate with our police department there. They're there so quickly, the guy fled. But you know, it's just a rising concern. Again, I'm a mom of two daughters, and it's just a place that we thought was really safe and guard gated, but that doesn't mean anything. So again, just bringing this, you know, to your attention. And also, I just wanted to add on one more thing. I know you guys are going to discuss, so I don't really want to talk more about that part. But I do want to talk about Newport Coast Drive in general, just as a safety concern. I just wanted to, you know, bring to your attention that the vehicles frequently exceed 60 miles per hour. I know my kids go to Newport Coast Elementary School, and we're really lucky with like the crossing guards, and we've had police presence there before just to monitor the speed and make sure the kids are crossing the street safely. So that's really helpful and great. But again, there's the street racing, and I know that there's been vehicle impounds and things like that from all those fast cars. And I don't know if this just is more of like a safety concern, and if there's possible, maybe we can do like a traffic survey or look into it a little bit more, just to kind of manage, because it's like an arterial feeder from the 73 to PCH. And the way those cars are going, I mean, I would say majority are not residents of Newport. So if there's anything that we could do just to look into that, I'm sure when Newport Coast was built, it was just a real nice residential street, but it's now turned into like, kind of like a mini highway. So just to bring that to your attention, if we can maybe do a traffic survey study or something and just see what we can do to kind of like minimize the excess speed that is we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council members. How are you? My name is Bruce Albert, and I'm a president and been HOA board member for about 10 years over at Pelican Ridge. Pardon me. Just to piggyback on the piggyback, you know, we have, as a board, have really addressed this for the last two years. We've had probably at least, in our 60 homes in our community, probably have had, I'm going to say at least eight robberies in the last two years, you know, almost 10%.
Burglaries.
What is it?
A robbery is armed with a gun at somebody's head. A burglary is somebody breaks in as an opportunity crime, yeah.
We, as a board, have actually done quite a bit. We've appropriated a lot of money. We've built fences, anti-burglary fences. We've consulted with the police department. They have been great. Sarah is one of the lead people that has come out to the community oftentimes and has helped us with both meetings with the, you know, people in our community as well with us. And we've actually tried to introduce motion cameras and a lot of other things. You know, with what's been happening, it's, I'm just reiterating sort of what Michael said, and it sounds like you guys have been doing a lot on your end. We appreciate that. It just seems it's continuing to happen, and any additional resources you guys can provide would be really well appreciated.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you for what you continue to serve, yeah.
We're on it. Need more horses and quads in the canyon is what I'm hearing, so.
Good evening, Mayor Stapleton, council members. I'm here to speak just briefly about the farmer's market. I'm here also on behalf of several local residents who were unable to be here tonight. My name is Barbara Keller, 27-year homeowner in the Flower Streets. The neighbors are still concerned with the following. Will the Corona Del Mar Farmer's Market continue to be a certified organic market? Or is it going to become a community market? Does the new manager have a health permit from the Orange County Healthcare Agency? And if they do not, have they applied for one? Or will they be applying for one? When you approved the contract a few weeks ago, there was concern about the parking plan for the market, and the city was to develop a parking plan to minimize congestion in the neighborhood. I'm wondering if that has been completed or what the status of it is. And finally, the neighbors are concerned that you, when the new contract is executed, that it will not, that it will specify there's to be no music at these markets, and that there would be no food trucks. I believe you committed to both in the original contract. So we'd appreciate knowing the status of those items. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Carmen Rosso. As you look at technologies to help reduce the burglaries in Newport Coast, other areas of the city we have problems too. Near the pier, we don't have burglaries, but we have shootings. So I would like to understand, and also, I would like to understand the bars that are in that area. We have a big concentration. What the bars are doing to try to minimize the situations of bars fights and so forth. So the Newport Beach Police Department has to spend less resources in the Newport Pier area to be able to cover all the other areas of the city. And if there are technologies that apply to Newport Coast, they maybe also could be implemented in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Before we do, my email for both you gentlemen is online and very accessible. So myself, Sarah Weber, maybe Mayor Protim Kliman, and some of it is in your district. The three of us, we're happy to set up a meeting with the city attorney, our police chief. So if you guys want to email us, we'll get this meeting set up in the next couple of weeks, probably bring in the district attorney's office as well. So I know they're working really hard to make sure we catch some of these South American gangs as well that are committing some of these crimes that we're finding in our community. So we're all in, we're here to be supportive and make sure that we protect all of our residents, Newport Coast or Peninsula, wherever it may be. So thank you for coming out. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 18. This is the ordinance 2025-10 and Resolution 2025-32 approving the amendment to the Housing Opportunity Overlaying Zoning in Coastal Zoning Districts and Resolution 2025-33. Ben, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Ben Zadiba, Planning Manager and lone representative for the Community Development Department this evening. I'm going to provide you a very brief presentation, starting with the background of this matter. As you all well know by now, the city does have a certified housing element that was adopted in September of 2022 and certified by the State Department of Housing Community Development in October. As a key component of implementing the housing element, city council did implement the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zoning Districts, which were fully consistent with the housing element in terms of focus areas and translating to subareas, which you'll see here on this map. So we do have five different subareas that are, again, intended to implement the housing element to the fullest extent in terms of rezoning. So why are we here? When we started to implement the housing opportunity overlays, we heard from several stakeholders and property owners that the maximum heights were not adequate to accommodate the intended densities and required densities by the housing element, that is typically 20 to 50 dwelling units per acre. So the city council did adopt a resolution to initiate amendments to the Housing Opportunity Overlay Districts in November of 2024. As staff started to evaluate heights, particularly in the HO4 Newport Center subarea, staff found that there were several benefits to increasing height. First and foremost, there's a general plan policy in the land use element that relates to the original vision for Newport Center, locating a lot of the height near the north and northeastern quadrant. And a lot of the benefits surround more density and a smaller footprint, which may yield fewer projects, and ultimately activating an urban core in Newport Center, increasing a mixed-use development that thrives on walkability and adjacency to other uses. So the proposed amendments before you today, and just to clarify, this is an introduction. If you move this item, there will be a second reading before this is adopted. The proposed amendments before you today simply earmark or allocate 179 units to city-controlled property at 1201 Dove Street in the airport area. There are no other changes in the airport area and further no changes to development The amendments would also allocate 152 units to city-owned property at 868 and 870 Santa Barbara Drive, which is the current police and fire station. It would also increase the maximum height limits for housing projects taking advantage of the overlay. I just wanted to show this, this was a very first draft of our height exhibit. I wanted to primarily show it to show that staff focused on the Newport Center area with our initial analysis, and further wanted to highlight that the Newport Center site plane at the southeastern quadrant is being respected through this effort and unaltered. I also wanted to throw in that there was a property, excuse me, in East Bluff area where the height was actually being limited to 32 feet. And that was very intentional because of feedback received that the neighborhood is well-established with low-lying single-unit residences and that a higher height would not be appropriate there. So the A at the top left of your screen indicates a 32-foot height limit. So in brief, these are the changes being proposed through this amendment. You'll see a lot of the current heights are definitely low-lying, and a lot of this is in Newport Center, with the exception of the bottom two rows, which were, as you'll see here, requested by property owners or individuals with ownership interest and added by Planning Commission as part of the recommendation. Just to drill into those additional sites, it's three housing element sites. You've got 141, which translates to Appendix B in the housing element. That is at the adjacent to the AT&amp;T Switching Station on Ford Road. And then you've got two church sites, St. Michael and All Angels Church and Newport Center United Methodist. Both of those would be increased from 32 feet up to 48 feet for the Ford Road site, and 50 feet flat and 55 feet sloped on the church sites. I know this is a very tough scale to read, but this is basically what is included in your ordinance for consideration. This is what would be put into the zoning code if you took the introduction action as recommended this evening. My last slide is just a brief process summary. So as I stated, city council did initiate the amendments in November of '24, and we took this to Planning Commission for consideration in January of this year. We went to ALUC twice. ALUC determined that the proposed amendments were inconsistent, primarily because the amendment included anything to do with housing in the airport area with the city's proposed allocation of units on 1201 Dove Street. You all authorized a notice of intent to override ALUC's determination in April, and staff promptly sent that notice to ALUC the day after. And we did receive agency comments from ALUC as well as Caltrans. Interestingly, Caltrans actually supported the city's proposed override. So today's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, find that this is exempt from SEQA, or, sorry, not subject to SEQA for the reason of being previously addressed in the program EIR for the housing element, and introduce the ordinance to amend the overlays as identified and to adopt the resolution to override ALUC's determination. I want to highlight that because per the California Public Utilities Code, the council would have to do a two-thirds or a five-of-seven majority vote to pass that resolution to override ALUC. And lastly, we would submit the local coastal program amendment to the Coastal Commission with your authorization to the resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Great presentation. Do we have any council comments before we go to public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want, Deborah Allen, Harbor V Hills. Funny, when I was sitting and listening to Bruce Clark, I know all of those people. I will have lived in my house for 49 years next week.
Good for you.
Anyway, thank you, Ben, for letting me know that this was on the agenda. And I just want to thank the council for respecting the Newport Center view plane. And if anybody at any point in time, I'm not going to bore you with it now, wants the history of it, because I'm unfortunately old enough that I'm now the historical memory of the city, I would be happy to walk you through it and talk about it, but thank you for your respecting it.
Well, thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tom Nicholson. I live at 21 Shoal in Corona Del Mar, just a short walk from St. Michael's and All Angels Episcopal Church. I'm a member of the church vestry, and I also serve on the real estate committee that's helping lead this housing effort. I'm here with, I think, 25 or 30 congregation members. I think we lost a couple in the time it's taken. And I just want to start by clearing up a few things about what this project is not. And I just want to start by clearing up a few things about what this project is not. It is not being done by some outside developer. We are not tearing down a church or tearing down a gym. This is not government-subsidized, low-income housing, and we are not asking for any kind of special treatment. Unfortunately, a post circulated recently among parents at Harbor Day School and shared with the head of school had several of those inaccuracies. And I think that post probably sparked a lot of those cut-and-paste objection emails that you all must have received. We immediately responded with a letter to Harbor Day School, and since then, their head of school has sent us a letter affirming the longstanding and very positive relationship between our two communities for mutual cooperation. This letter has been submitted into the record, and I hope it is, I hope it helps clear things up. Now let me share what this project actually is. It's a proposal and project led by our church, guided by members of the vestry who are longstanding residents and experienced real estate professionals. We are not outsiders. We live here, work here, and we care deeply about doing something that serves both our church mission and the community's housing needs. We have backing from Farmers Merchants Bank to help make this happen. We're planning a senior housing project on the west side of the parking lot, a part of the property that is underused and ready to be reimagined. And rather than tearing anything down, the revenue from this project will help us maintain and improve the existing church campus and fund community-serving programs for years to come. The Episcopal Diocese requires that any residential project include an affordable housing element. We've planned 10% to 20% of the units to be affordable, which helps working families and seniors on fixed incomes who would otherwise not be able to afford to live here. This isn't Section 8 housing, it's not government-subsidized. In Orange County, affordable housing can mean a household earning $130,000 a year for a family of four. We are talking about nurses, teachers, retired neighbors, people who are already part of our community. Now let's talk about the height adjustment. This is a key piece of the HO4 overlay zone that the city has already put in place. We're not asking for any special favors. There are over 30 parcels that are included. We're simply asking for equal treatment, and the same flexibility other sites are being given. For us, the extra height will make a significant and meaningful difference, allowing us to build 14 to 18 additional units, which helps hit our affordability target and keep the project financially feasible. Without it, I simply request your support for including us in this adjustment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Stapleton and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. As we've heard, this whole exercise is prompted by the state requirement for our new housing element. The main obligation the city has under that is to come forward with affordable housing. As we heard, affordable may not be quite what some people think it means, but still we need to produce affordable housing. I would suggest that the very large height increases proposed for Newport Center are actually counterproductive to that effort, because we have no mandatory requirement to build any affordable housing in that area of Newport Beach. We have a small requirement in one area near the airport, but not in Newport Center. And increasing height allows for the building of larger, more expensive units, not the affordable ones that we need to produce. Another thing I find very counterintuitive about this is buried in the staff report here is an indication that when this was before the Planning Commission, the city staff was asking to reserve 199 of the units allocated to Newport Center for possible residential development at the current fire and police station location. And in the current proposal, that is being reduced to 152 units. Now, I understand why having more units available to the private developers is an advantage to the private developers. I don't see what the public interest is in reducing that number. It seems to me that that is making the city's property, the public property, less valuable than it would have been if it was entitled to have 199 units. I do not understand why we're doing that. The other big problem with this is the treatment of aesthetics in the SEQA findings, which you can find on page 85. When you increase heights, one of the obvious concerns is going to be aesthetics. This says that none of the specified sites are located immediately in front of or adjacent to viewpoints, therefore, future development of the sites, even with increased height, does not have a potential to obstruct views or deviate the visual quality of scenic vistas. I don't know if the people who wrote that understood that Avocado Avenue right behind you from the council chamber is a designated scenic view road, and we have a park here that has scenic views from it. And we even, a previous council spent, I think, over a million dollars to build a bridge over Miguel, San Miguel Drive, with a viewpoint on it. And this proposal, immediately adjacent to us across Avocado on the south side of Civic Center Drive, is now proposing 70-foot buildings there and on the other side, 150 feet. I don't understand how that could not impact views. And a previous council, as you may recall, even had to turn the sail on this building sideways to not impact views. There seems to be an incorrect SEQA finding there, and I think you should have trouble making that finding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Next speaker.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, council. Hi, staff. Thank you for having us today. My name is Katie Moat. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar and have been for 20 years. I'm a mom, wife, all the other jazz. And I'm here also as a parishioner of St. Michael's Church for 13 years. But I'm also here with a slightly different perspective. For two and a half years, I worked out at the Oasis Center managing Newport Beach's Meals on Wheels program. And so I got a firsthand look that not very many people probably have had of the distinct population that exists in our city of Newport Beach that lives alone, that lives in trailer parks, that lives without anybody coming to see them except maybe the person that delivers their meal to them from Meals on Wheels. These are the senior citizens that live in our community. And I did a little bit of a deep dive on the Newport Beach demographics website, and we have about 83,000 people in Newport Beach. Of those, approximately 23% are individuals over the age of 65. 2.2 residences in Newport Beach are, I mean, sorry, most residents in Newport Beach only have 2.2 people living in them. So there are a lot of older people living in single residences. They're lonely, and they're alone. What do we have in the city of Newport Beach in terms of even affordable housing are 435 designated units that are affordable housing? And in Newport Beach, affordable housing equals moderate income, a single person making $114,000 a year or less, or lower income, which is $93,000 a year or less as a single person. That's a lot of money. But worse for our seniors, of those 435 designated affordable units, there are only 232 that are designated for senior citizens. St. Michael's Church is looking to build a building that will house, have between 60 and 90 units, and that's really going to depend on the height restriction being, or adjustment being applied to our parcel and not parceled out for, you know, the sake of a square drawn on a map. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Planning Department for including, thank you, Benjamin, our parcel in your height amendment. I think it's going to make a huge difference to the senior citizens that are in our community and our ability to be able to put 10, at least 10% to 20% of those units as affordable housing for senior citizens, given what that means in our city of Newport Beach. So thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilman Noah Blum.
Thank you so much. I think as we start running through this piece, I think some clarification is necessary, especially to the St. Michael's community out there. You know, it's interesting, we're talking about height. We're not talking about a project. We're talking about how high the city should just allow that parcel to go, which is really interesting to me, that we haven't seen a plan, a design, a spec on something. And as Mr. Zabita originally started talking, when we looked at the commercial core of what this city is, which is Newport Center, and we considered height in general, we were looking at how does this affect the all of Newport? The intent of this wasn't to start picking off parcels. You know, and as we see some of the other ones that did come through, as he brought attention to another one, well, it sits encompassed as a vacant parcel, surrounded by residents and parks. Okay. I can understand how a lower height than even the request would be approved. The question I have is, when I'm looking at a project, and I'm guilty of building projects as well, I'm looking at it, it requires a lot, a lot. Parking studies, traffic studies. And right now, the request that I have in front of me is, so to allow a height change for something without a project, taking up utilized space that's currently used by the existing spot. So you have parking lots, where do those parking lots go? Do we need the height so we can go up higher for parking structures? Do we have flow patterns going on through these? And so my issue isn't with the project at all, not one bit. My issue is that why is this the point where we're talking about it? Because if we know those heights can be approved in that area, isn't the better way to go through this and submit a completed and final idea? A project with traffic studies and parking studies, showing how it affects the neighboring communities, before just coming to us and saying, hey, we want to be at this height? And so that's really my issue when we're looking at something like this, is that the idea in raising some of the heights, figuring out how we can work within arena numbers, because it is very near and dear to my heart. I care a lot about working with these. I'm not in the business of fighting with the state. We're in the business of finding what is best for our own local control. And I have a really difficult time when I feel like this is just a gimme-gimme, we want this now, instead of, can we design something? Can we bring it back as a completed, beautiful project where I could see what it's going to look like? Because right now, we're just saying, hey, we're going to go up 55 feet. In an area that is not up 55 feet, it's surrounded by two schools, a cemetery, and a reservoir, I'm just wondering how the traffic implications will look like there. How do we address that piece? How do the schools get dropped off? How does this affect the children in the area? What is this going to look like? And so these are more questions and answers, which is really the point of planning. A lot of the projects that you brought up have brought forth very completed plans, beautiful renderings, great projects. We have an idea of where they're going, they're on parcels that have not ever been developed, or they're on something that's already controlled and it underutilized. Right now, and from a lot of the comments I'm getting, you're fully utilized. There's no desire to adjust the utilization of what you're doing strictly to take over the parking lot, which I'm sure you use when people show up there, to build something else. And therein lies my problem with approving something. This is a very cart before the horse type of situation for me. And so I'm happy to look at any type of development that fits what this community wants, that fits what works within the parameters of what we do, and that maintains really the local control that we fought so hard for to maintain by not having the state come in and mandate what we do and where we do it. And so it's really hard for me to throw this in as just a secondary choice that was approved by a previous dius and say that, great, with no staff report, with no recommendation other than what happened up here, we're going to throw another project in. I'm going to need a little bit more than that to look at this. And I'm not saying that I'm against this project at all. In fact, the opposite. I'm very much for something that could work for you. But I can't be for it unless there is a plan, an operation, and we understand the impacts that happen at the local community. And I would expect that that is what the church community would want as well. They would want to make sure that this works. They'd want to make sure that traffic doesn't line up down the street, that when kids are playing, it doesn't become an issue with child drop-offs and everything else that happens in that area. So a completed plan, sending that through properly and through the proper channels? Wonderful. I would love to see something like that. Changing the height ordinance for something that might be in the future without seeing anything? Fortunately, I just can't get behind it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robin Grant.
Thank you. I spent quite a bit of time over the last, I guess, couple of days speaking with stakeholders about this particular issue, and I've heard a lot of perspectives. And I think that there is a genuine interest in being appreciative, you know, from my standpoint, being appreciative of what the church's efforts are here to align with our city's housing element. That is very important for us as a community to get behind, and we on the council here have been dealing with that for a number of years. Council before us dealt with that. Aligning with the housing element is, you know, very critical so that we can, you know, continue along the path of meeting the mandates that we have before us. And I appreciate the church's, you know, very genuine efforts to craft an opportunity to align with what the needs of the community are, given our mandates, and also to continue to thrive in the community. I'm very, you know, sensitive to those concerns and those efforts. And I would say that I, you know, I do support the church working, continuing to work with our very, very, very capable community development department. You know, we've seen a great presentation here today, and we have very capable men and women that are working in the department. I'd like to see you continue to work with our community development department to improve the proposal, you know, to pivot a little so that does align with the larger community development standards and that we can come to a meeting of the minds and move forward with the project. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments? Do we have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move staff recommendation with the removal of housing element sites number 146 and 147 for having special heights.
Okay. Do you have a second? Councilmember Weber, our discussion. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance, Title IV, ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Section 20.28.50 Housing Opportunity Overlay Zoning Districts in Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to implementation of the housing element. Now that was my last ordinance read.
Well done.
Councilmember Bardo. Did you vote? Thank you so much. The motion carries 6-0.
Okay, item 19 is resolution number 2025-34, fiscal year 2025-2026, budget adoption. Jason and our finance team, let's hear what you got.
The months and months of work on our financial plan, here we are to present the final edition. So before we begin, I just want to thank staff, and I want to thank our finance committee members as well for a terrific effort putting this budget together and our city manager. So thank you for your hard effort.
Walking in.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Shelby Burgwann. I am your deputy finance director. Presented for your consideration tonight is the adoption of the fiscal year 2025-26 proposed budget. City has a very robust budget process that provides various opportunities for public engagement and review, beginning all the way back in January of this year. After the budget was presented to the City Council at your last meeting, the Finance Committee met on May 29th to finalize their recommendations to the City Council. The proposed budget prioritizes long-term needs through increased capital transfers. The city has maintained its AAA credit rating, due in part to responsible budgeting practices and the sound financial leadership of the City Council. This budget includes a payment of $40 million to CalPERS with an additional $5 million recommended to be paid from the year-end surplus. This strategy results in the elimination of the city's pension liability in fiscal year 2033. The general fund has a The general fund has a structural surplus of $12.2 million. On May 29th, the Finance Committee voted to recommend the city manager's proposed budget for City Council consideration as presented. Adoption of the budget includes two components, the proposed budget book that was distributed in early May, plus the proposed budget revisions that are before you. These are items that are brought to staff's attention after the budget is initially developed and printed, such as the Memoranda of Understanding with the Newport Beach Firefighters Association and the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards, both of which were approved by council after the printing of the proposed budget. The highlighted items on the slide before you are items that have been added since the May 27th budget presentation. They are all related to CIP projects that were already included in the proposed CIP, but the numbers are being adjusted slightly. These were included in the final presentation to the Finance Committee on May 29th, and are included in the budget that they voted to recommend for approval. The general fund budget, including those proposed budget revisions, has a structural surplus of $12.2 million. The proposed general fund budget is balanced, with revenues exceeding expenditures. Included in the proposed budget is an additional $6.4 million discretionary payment to the city's pension liability, and an increase of $5 million in transfers to the FFP for future capital needs. The general fund surplus equals $12.2 million. Thanks to the careful fiscal management of the City Council, the city has generated a strong surplus, which has enabled additional contributions to capital improvement projects and supported an aggressive pension pay-down plan. The recommendation before you this evening is to hold a public hearing regarding the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26, and to approve the recommendations outlined in the agenda report. That concludes our presentation. We are available for any questions you may have.
Well done. Any questions or comments on council? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open public hearing. Any public comments on this item?
Hello, Carmen Rosen. I would like to politely request that you remove from the capital improvement projects the Project 25R13, that is, the oceanfront boardwalk expansion from 14th Street to 20th Street, that shows construction for the fiscal year 2025-2026. And in the April 1st Park Beaches Recreation Commission minutes, clearly states that the recommendation to the City Council is to get more clarification in changing policies on e-bikes, the viability of all the three phases of the project. If you're going to have a separate bike path that we residents do not want, in fact, most of the correspondents want is opposition of having a separate bike path, then it should be evaluated for the complete 42 blocks of the boardwalk, not just for six blocks, and also for the city to investigate with other cities that have established a separate bike path if an added trail increase safety. Right now, we, we just, you recently approved an ordinance to stop bicycles, e-bikes on the sand, but having a separate bike path doesn't guarantee that they are going to even use the bike path. They may go on the sand. And right now, it will really interfere with the use of the beach. I invite you, any of you, I will walk with you from 36th Street to E Street, so you evaluate how the beach is used. We have people playing volleyball, soccer, all sorts of games, and putting a bike path in the middle of the sand is not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Adam Leverens again, and I apologize for having so many opinions tonight. Coincidentally, something with this item also ties into a Harbor Commission agenda item, and what I'm referring to is attachment lowercase f, I believe, in the agenda materials, which is the citywide salary schedule. Previously, in Harbor Master updates and references, I'm familiar with employees over there being referred to as Harbor Service Workers. Starting tomorrow's Harbor Master Update, and then I find in this attachment, they are now called Harbor Safety Officers, and I don't, I no longer see Harbor Service Workers There's other agenda materials tomorrow that talk about fishermen have sharp knives and objects, and being able to conduct stops, and they don't have authority, but they conduct consensual stops. And it, I know there's some pretend to be policemen in the Harbor Department. And Mayor, I've heard you at least on two occasions, and as they just mentioned, talking about paying down unfunded pension debts. I'm just digging into this now, but it appears to me that Safety Officer pensions accrue at up to four times higher rate than service workers. And I, just this change surprises me that I hadn't heard about it before, but yet here it is dated February, or the 28th of this month to take effect. And it just, it puzzles me, and it concerns a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Maureen Cotton, Newport Beach resident, also the president of the Central Newport Beach Community Association. I want to thank you all for what you've been doing here. I know that it's a big effort to go through the CIP and to sit here and grind through it. I do agree with that gentleman, that, that's a huge increase for, for somebody's, for the pension, for a pension demand. I'm sure you're going to look into it. But the reason I'm here is to request that Item 25R13 of the Capital Improvement Program be removed from the City CIP. This item is the oceanfront boardwalk expansion from 14th Street to 20th Street. The description implies that this is a project that the community needs and desires, which is contrary to the message that the community sent to the City Council and to the Park Beaches and Recreation Commission via 87 letters. Of those 87 letters and emails that were sent, they were from homeowners and taxpayers all on the peninsula. 85 of the 87 opposed the expansion and inclusion of a second, a split trail. Many of the comments that were made by the commission, the PVNR commission, related to if you can't do it the whole length as Carmen recommended, and it can't be done, and we know that because of the sensitive habitats that exist from the school to E Street. The other thing that's a big deal, we've, we've recently spoken to the principal of Newport Elementary, they had no idea that this was a project that the city had spent and invested so much time and, and resources on already, and they are absolutely opposed to it. So given the fact that it literally dead-ends at the school, it's, it's an unsafe choice. I have had some conversations with you that it, it doesn't seem that it's an option that you guys are favoring. We're very much in favor of the fact that since our little outcry, we've had more enforcement on the boardwalk, and subsequent to having the police officers out there, they're the ones who saw how dangerous the behavior is of these people on electric bikes and scooters and what have you. And the new ordinance 2025-6 has been implemented, and we thank you for that. We're, we're looking forward to continued enforcement. People have been getting $300 fines, and, and we see the kids slamming their brakes, and the adults, and a lot of out-of-towners. My husband and I have an act that we're going, well, you know, if they want to speed, I hope they're expecting a $300 ticket. And we, we know that they're listening, and all of a sudden, you know, some of them slow down, and I don't, I don't know if it works, you know, it's my passive-aggressive way. The other thing is Item 24H12, and we're not asking that it be removed, but we'd like to have the, the language that says adding a second path removed from the description so that we're, nobody gets the concept that this is something that the community wants. Not only that, but there is such a narrow area between the boardwalk and the beach along the north of the pier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Corey Kramer. I'm a member of the city's Finance Committee. I stand before here to express my strong support for the approval of the city's proposed budget. This budget reflects a thoughtful and balanced approach to meeting the needs of our vibrant community while maintaining fiscal responsibility. It prioritizes essential services like public safety, infrastructure maintenance, and coastal preservation, ensuring Newport Beach remains a safe, beautiful, and thriving place to live, work, and visit. Investments in parks, libraries, and community programs demonstrate a commitment to enhancing our quality of life, fostering connection, and supporting residents of all ages. The budget also addresses long-term challenges such as rising costs of infrastructure upgrades with prudent financial planning that avoids burdening future generations. By allocating resources efficiently and transparently, this plan upholds the trust our community places in your leadership. I urge the City Council to approve this budget as aligns with our shared vision for a prosperous and resilient Newport Beach. Thank you for your dedication for our city's future. Thank you.
Well said. Committee Member Kramer. Any other public comments in this public hearing session? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back here. Do you guys have any comments on anything that was?
I just wanted to point out that the changes to the Harbor Service Workers, it's just a job descrip, not, it's not a job description change, it's a naming convention change. So it won't result in the, the employees receiving public safety.
They're not sworn officers on the water receiving four times the pension.
Correct.
Okay. We've cleared that up at least, if we accomplish anything else tonight. Okay. Good comment. Anything else? I would just, no, are you speaking or making a motion?
No, I was just, I know, I've been using this all night for alternate moves, but real quickly, I, after spending a lot of time in the Finance Committee, and I found it to be the most boring committee in all of the city because we do such a good job at it.
That's a great, that's a, that's quite the accomplishment.
I, I think it's, I thought we'd be doing, fixing a lot of big problems, and I think that's the irony about the beauty of this city, is that, you know, even though there is large budget, we maintain really tight fiscal concerns to make sure that we run a very tight and amazing place, especially in an environment that I, I think most of our outliers, neighbors, and the entire state probably as a whole cannot say, but we can sit there in our little perfect bastion and say that. And so I just want to commend staff for tireless work and countless adjustments and changes that we throw at them continuously. The entire Finance Committee for the amazing job that they've done, and all of the executive team. I, I think it truly is an accomplishment when you think about running about a half-billion-dollar budget, maintaining everything from police, fire, our own private ambulances here, and maintaining the streets that we all want. It, it really is wonderful to sometimes sit up here and hear what the complaints are with our city, because they are not the complaints of other major cities throughout this world. And that should truly make us all smile and realize that the problems we're dealing with, although they are big to all of us, they are not monumental when we look at the rest of the world. And so we're all very thankful and privileged to be here, and I think a huge amount of that is due to the way that we run our finances. So I just want to thank the entire committee and staff for that.
Terrific. I will just echo Committee Member Kramer's comments. I agree, legacy of fiscal responsibility, budget surplus, and kudos to our entire Finance Department, all that you guys have done, and to our city staff for your, your effort and our entire committee. So with that, I will go ahead and take the privilege of making the motion to approving our 25-26 annual budget. Do I have a second? Okay. Councilmember Weber, second. All right, discussion. Let's vote.
The motion carries 6-0.
Well done. Finance is boring. I like that. That's what we strive for here. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motion for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. Before we go into closed session, we're going to go to the adjournment in memory of Melinda Sealy. Councilmember Robin Grant.
Thank you. Our community is deeply saddened by the passing of Melinda Sealy, an educator, business owner, and unwavering advocate for aviation, women's equality, and many other initiatives. Born on January 15th, 1939, in Eagle Rock, Melinda became a Newport Beach resident at age 16. She attended Newport Harbor High School, then Orange Coast College, where she was crowned homecoming princess. Melinda graduated from Cal State University Long Beach with a degree in education and a heart set on shaping our community for the better. In 1963, she married her husband of 62 years, Hal Sealy. The couple, the, excuse me, excuse me. The couple shared a deep commitment to preserving the unique character and natural beauty of Newport Beach. Melinda served as an active community volunteer, serving on the Board of Directors for the Environmental Nature Center, the Orange Coast College Alumni Association, the Newport Foundation, line in the sand, and still protecting our Newport spawn. In 1993, Melinda helped found Women in Leadership. She was also a founding member of Air Fair, a community watchdog group dedicated to monitoring issues involving the sustainability of our airport. Her passion and commitment helped shape our community and inspired countless others to act. The Sealy family will be celebrating her life, or celebrated her life in a private ceremony, when anyone wishing to make a memorial contribution is requested to donate either to Women in Leadership or the Environmental Nature Center, where she volunteered and served on the board for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just say that on behalf of all of us on the City Council and residents of Newport Beach, Newport is a better place because of Melinda and her service to our great community. So, thank you for that. Okay, now's the time for public comments on closed session items. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and, any, yeah, that's it. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor Silperton. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's representatives and labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the key management group and all the unions set forth on the agenda under, under Item 18A. Thank you.
Okay, we stand reassessed.